Was there any oral communications? Great, thank you. Wonderful. So I will need a motion to approve the minutes from last meeting and then a second. I think Virginia has motioned.
I'll second it.
And then John has seconded. All in favor of approving? Aye. Thank you. Great. Moving on to our first agenda topic. Am I, is it just the library director's report? Did we strike?
Do you have anything else in your packet?
Okay, because we struck the voting for, we talked about it all over the last meeting. Yeah. So we struck the voting that will occur on the, at the May 11th meeting, which will allow for the two new members to be present for vote.
Right. So then the next item will be the Library IQ overview.
Oh, great.
So we're getting the PowerPoint together for that at the moment.
Wonderful. Why don't I have, Dara, I don't think I have the agenda on here. So.
That was March 9th meeting minutes.
Do you, oh, and it does look different. Okay, so we, they have us using MuniCode now?
Let me, oh, well, I have, oh, okay. Okay, so it's a little different. I'm so sorry. I probably should know this.
It has been a learning curve for us as well.
Good, good.
So any of the items that have like a highlighted number next to them, you'll have the background information when you turn to it in here.
Okay.
So, yeah.
All right, great. So we just restructured the agenda, just to let everyone know and then.
Well, we have this really fancy.
New.
New database called MuniCode where we just upload the things one at a time. So it looks different when it prints out.
Okay.
And we're still learning to use it, so excuse us at this point.
Okay, great. Okay, wonderful. No, no worries. So, okay, yes.
So it is there, you just kind of.
We're doing all of these, but I have.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dara, for leading me through that. Okay, so great. We just approved the minutes from the last meeting. Our current business is, one, two, three, four, five items. The annual officer election, we are deferring to May.
So you're first up because he works in the library.
And now we have the Library IQ overview. Thank you, thank you, Heidi. Welcome.
I need to, there we go. Let me get started. All right, so hello, everyone. My name is Heidi Dolamore and I am the Vice President of Operations with Library Systems and Services. And I have, I have a little presentation for you. I just want you to know that feel free to direct this in whatever way you'd like to go. Please let it be conversational. There's a lot, there's a lot that we could talk about and so I want to make sure it really reflects what you're most interested in. Just wanted to start with a little recap of the added value that LSNS brings to the library and this partnership. Libraries really are a mirror on their communities and we are here to support, uplift, and help everyone in the library so that when the library thrives, the community thrives. And we all know that a library is so much more than the physical space and the items inside of it. It's really about relationships. It's that community connection. It's that bringing people together that makes a library so successful. And there are all sorts of relationships that come together to make the library successful and we really want to be there to support you and help you in whatever way is necessary. Of course, the library board is such a huge part of that partnership and we really value your input, your feedback, your guidance, and your deep knowledge of the, of the community. Some of the benefits that, that we bring to the table are that, that hyper-local focus on the, the needs and aspirations and goals and priorities of Escondido. We have a back-of-house team that provides a lot of administrative support so that your staff can be really focused on the people who walk in the door. They can be focused on, on all of you, all of, all of Escondido. We have experts across the nation that contribute to the brain trust that can help power your library and we really bring those best practices, those innovations, to the forefront in your library. And we think that we do that in a way that is very fiscally responsible. We give you a lot of predictability, a lot of stability when it comes to budgeting and, and funding your library services. So some of the things that, that we offer are expertise, not just in libraries, but in, in IT, in marketing, in human resources. We have, we contribute to strategic planning. Of course, Escondido has its, is implementing its very first library strategic plan, which we're very excited about. We bring a data-driven approach. We are, we love to make informed decisions and we feel that those are, it's important to have a wealth of knowledge informing the decisions that you make. We are, we act essentially as a consortium in giving you access to economies of scale that wouldn't necessarily be otherwise available to you. And we are able to, again, provide that, that consistency and optimization where it makes sense so that we can also have that hyper-local focus on what is relevant for Escondido. We bring a great deal of professional development to the table as well. For example, I don't think I've gotten a chance to share with you a new program that we've launched, a leadership development program. We call it Leadership Academy and so it's a way for us to elevate both current leaders, potential, and potential leaders. Connect them with peer-to-peer learning and mentoring so that they can grow and recognize that, that leadership potential in themselves. But let's get on to your favorite, your favorite piece, which is Library IQ. One of our, one of the added benefits that we bring to the relationship is a data analytics platform that we actually developed in-house to help us make the best decisions possible. We found that we weren't the only ones who had these same kinds of questions and had these same kinds of needs and so this has been a very successful service that we've actually offered to libraries that are not LSNS managed. This is in use by, I think the count now is over 1,000 libraries across the country are using Library IQ. And the more libraries use it, the more powerful a tool becomes because of course we get more feedback, more input, and more connections that we're able to make. So I've been thinking about, I've been thinking about recently, you've probably, maybe you've been thinking about this too, lots of stories in the news about artificial intelligence and generative AI. And I think something that is important to understand about Library IQ, and who knows, maybe the future holds something different for Library IQ, but right now, Library IQ doesn't take the place of that local decision-making, right? Library IQ can't tell you what to do. It can't make decisions for you. What it can do is give you a, access to a vast amount of information so that your decisions are the best decisions possible, so that your decisions are informed, so that they are reflective of the entire community that is, is accessing and using your library. So we have a tool that really does the heavy lift. We, as librarians, love to count things. There are immense numbers of things that we could analyze and we don't want your, your library team to be stuck in a back room looking at spreadsheets for hours. We want them to have a powerful tool, a dashboard that helps them visualize, understand, and access that information quickly, easily, and efficiently so that they can in turn focus on those relationships, focus on that, that community connection. So Library IQ is a very powerful tool that aggregates information from a variety of sources. It helps, it helps our library staff analyze what's, and understand what's happening in the building and outside the building, what's happening amongst our, our users and even our potential users. And it visualizes that information so that it's easy to understand. It's not just numbers on a spreadsheet. It tells a story. And ultimately, the whole point of that is for us to be able to take action and make decisions that are informed by that data. So let's talk a little bit about the specifics. This is an example of a, a page that you might encounter within our Library IQ tool. It has real-time visualization that helps you identify what's going well, where you're experiencing challenges, and it helps you quantify and measure your goals and your progress towards those goals. I'll just pause and say, again, feel free to interrupt if you have any specific questions and I do have the platform open so we can take a little peek behind, behind the curtain and see the tool in use in real time.
So Heidi, I do want to jump in real quick.
Sure.
The last time I think that we were presented to regarding Library IQ was maybe like a year and a half ago, two years, maybe, I think, probably before Virginia was on board. And it was kind of this like new, you know, very like in-depth discussion, so I'm very pleased with this PowerPoint and presentation. But my question is, I think one of the things that we had heard last time was that we needed a couple of years under our belts with the current system that we're on. Are we at that threshold yet or do we have a couple more years to go before we can really use the tool?
Oh, no. It's, it's, it's here. It's, it's, it's big and large and, and, and very informative. So I, we are actually, the tool, it continues to evolve and I will be getting to in just a moment, a few of the new features that we've just rolled out. And we can talk a little bit more about each of those. I'm sure you'll have some, I'm sure you'll have some questions. This just gives you a little bit of an overview of all the various different data sources that we are pulling from. You know, this is, I think I read somewhere that the reason that phone numbers are seven numbers long is because research said that that was as many numbers as we could hold in our heads at one time. And so obviously there are more than seven numbers here that we're pulling from. There's only so much that we as humans can process and so we need someone, or we need tools that can enable us to understand, to tell a story. And so we're pulling from our, our library catalog system. We're pulling from the United States Census Bureau. We're pulling all of that community data. We're pulling our program information. We're pulling information from our electronic materials as well as our physical, physical materials. We have a lot of partner vendors and products that, that power other specific tools or services or processes in our library and we integrate those all into Library IQ so that there's an, it's, it's one-stop shopping.
Oh, go ahead.
So I was just going to clarify. What Carolyn is talking about is when we first went to Polaris. So that was the piece where they were waiting for us to, really, they said ideally three years before our numbers were very accurate and usable and then the pandemic hit. So that, that, just for clarity, I wanted to let you know, that's what we were talking about.
So we do have the ability now to see, some of this gives you a snapshot in time, what's happening now, but another piece that, that it offers is being able to observe trends over time. And so we have built up that, that mass of data in order to be able to really observe trends. And let's be honest, the last couple of years have been interesting. And so we have, we have a new way of looking at that very unique ecosystem that we all, we all existed in during the pandemic. So one of our newest feature is actually something called Diversity IQ. We all know that diversity, equity, and inclusion is, well, it's, it's an important value for libraries. It's also something that I think is becoming more of a, just an everyday dinner table conversation these days. And so we need tools to be able to evaluate, assess, see how we're doing, use peer benchmarking to see how we're doing compared with how others are doing, and help us inform and make decisions so that our collections, our resources are reflective of the vast diversity of our communities. And so this is a new feature that allows you to do a quick overview and analysis of your, your collection and see, does it reflect the diversity of our community? Does it incorporate different viewpoints? Does it incorporate the, the full breadth of human experience really in, in what we have to offer? And so we have, we utilize both our categorical classifications of our materials so we know that this book is about African culture and we know that this book is about women in STEM careers and so we're able to look and see are certain demographic or cultural groups reflected in our, in our collections. There are also a whole host of, of expert recommendations and, and advice on materials that are of high quality to include in the collection, different interest groups or affinity groups make recommendations of, you know, the best of the best that reflects, you know, African-American literature for, for young children or the Jewish-American experience, what have you. And so we're able to assess our collection against those recommended titles. We're bringing in more all the time so that you can see, do we have coverage in our, in our library of these unique areas? Another new feature we have is Metrics IQ. And again, this is a really powerful visualization tool. And I'm going to show you, I'm going to show you something fun in the actual tool to give you an idea of what this looks like. So let me pull up. So this is the, the actual Library IQ dashboard and I am going to take you to Metrics IQ right now. And we are going to pull up your Escondido information. And let's take a look. So something I think, something that we know or experience anecdotally is that the December holidays are a great time for people to get gadgets as a gift. Lots of people get, you know, a new e-reader, a new tablet, a new, a new whatever is the newest and latest. And so how does that impact libraries? Well, let's take a look at our total digital circulation. And so, oops, let's see. Actually, I'm going to look at. Sorry, I did this just five minutes ago and I thought I got a different, I remember having a different graph. Let me try and find, this is why, this is why you have slides and you don't do things live when you're, when you're working with online materials. So, okay, here, here we go. So Overdrive is one of our biggest ebook, e-audiobook, digital material platforms. And so look at what happens every January. We have this huge spike from December into January. Then you have, it, it's made extra easy to recognize because February is a short month and so February's numbers are always lower. But we can see every year in January, huge spike, January, huge spike. So this is, everyone got their gadget and they think, I got to get stuff for it or I need someone to help me learn how to use this. Where do they go to, to get that new content or to get that assistance to use their new tablet, their new e-reader, their new device? They come to the library. And so here's a visualization of that, that anecdotal knowledge, that experience that we have, that January, you wouldn't necessarily think it if, if you didn't have access, if you didn't know the library from the inside out, but you wouldn't think, January is the hottest month for ebooks in the library. So this is the kind of, the kind of information that we have access to just at our fingertips. So in addition to information about our, our collections, our usage, we can pull information about programs, program attendance, and again, have that really fast visualization so that we can easily draw connections, observe trends, and use that information to make decisions. We also have a new feature that allows us to understand more how our electronic collections are being used. Something to understand about digital collections within libraries is that we are often working with partners, with vendors to provide those collections. And one aspect of that relationship can result in that, that data being, living within a walled garden because each vendor is, has a unique platform. They may have a unique way of presenting their, their information or their statistics. And so being able to make apples-to-apples comparisons across different platforms, across physical and digital materials is a heavy lift. And so here we, we enable our library staff to have access to that information, again, just with a simple click of a, of a mouse button. Something that is on the horizon that we're very excited about, so if you will reflect back to your strategic planning experience and think about the market segmentation, the patron segmentation that we did. At the, at the time, you know, that is, again, maybe something that, that's a little bit more of a specialized in-depth analysis of your community and we are trying to, we are currently building a tool within Library IQ that will give you access to that information, again, on an ongoing basis. So rather than having access to that once every three years when we refresh the strategic plan, we want our, we want our staff to have access to that information on a day-to-day basis so that they can inform their ongoing decision-making. Very exciting. It's, as I'm sure you recall from the strategic plan, that information is, is complex and nuanced and so what we're trying to do is make that more accessible to frontline staff so that, again, they have access to that information, they can be informed in new and different ways when they're making decisions about the services that we, that we provide.
Excuse me, I think we had a, was it a Zoom meeting or something with a gentleman who was based in, I think, New Mexico on Claritas, was it?
So Claritas is the, the underlying information that is, is informing this aspect of the tool.
Okay. That's what I was curious about.
And I'm going to show you just another, I will go back to the, the tool itself. I'm going to show you another really fun piece of information that, that I enjoy looking at it because it is so, it's so real-time, it's so present. So you've probably had the experience where you've done an internet search, maybe you're going to a restaurant or you're going shopping and it'll pop up that little graph that tells you, oh, is it busy right now? It's busiest at nine o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the afternoon. Well, we have access to that same data for our library visitors. So this is our, this is our graphical representation of our foot traffic coming into the library. And right off the bat, you can, you can see a few interesting things. So, so look at this, look at this spike here on Tuesday mornings. That's storytime. So there's all kinds of interesting, interesting information that you can see here. And you can see, again, here we, we have storytime on Tuesday mornings, we have storytime on Thursday mornings, we've got another little spike there with all the kiddos coming in to, to hear their stories. So again, this is, it tells so much more of a story. People can relate to it in, in, much more quickly in such a different way than if we were to just have, you know, a spreadsheet with numbers. People's eyes start to glaze over. It doesn't feel as real as, or immediate. And if you really wanted to, to drill down and look at Tuesdays, we can, we can look more specifically just at Tuesdays. It gives you, it tells you what's the, what's the average for this day of the week, when is your peak usage, when is your maximum usage? So our storytimes on Tuesday, 41% above our average attendance. I mean, that is, storytime is a crowd pleaser. It's, there's such hunger and demand for it and it's, it's right here in the, in the All right. Not sure why it's not. There we go. So here are some of the, the highlights from, from our partnership from the past year and, and I could point to ways that each one of these is informed by that, that information that we're able to glean from Library IQ. So for example, with our strategic planning to optimize library services, again, right there, we can pull, if we're doing, looking at what's been successful in the library, where do we see opportunities, where have we seen growth so that we can use that to help us prioritize and plan for the future? That, Library IQ is built into your strategic plan. Library IQ is built into your collections assessment so that when we're identifying what materials to purchase, what materials have reached end of life, all of that information is available to you in Library IQ. And it is, it is such a powerful tool for, for data-driven decision-making. So happy to answer any questions that you might have or, or dive a little bit deeper into, into any aspects that you're curious about.
Heidi, great. Thank you so much. I'll turn it over to Virginia first.
Thank you. So as you probably know, Escondido's Latino community, so I was wondering what kind of support LSNS provides for our community specifically to ensure that our Latino population is served by the library to the best of its ability?
Sure. So we have, I can point to a few different things. One example is when we think about our collection, our collection management team, we have a huge team that supports the selection and acquisition of those materials. And because we are working in that consortium model, that means we can have a single, a person who is dedicated to Spanish language selection, who has an expertise in that area. If you were managing selection locally, you might have one person who has to be an expert in children's materials and adult materials and, and English language materials and Spanish language materials, but we have someone who can be dedicated and focused on that. And not only that, but we work with a variety of libraries and so we are always getting lots of feedback and input to improve the, our access to materials. It can be, it can be challenging to find the right vendors to provide materials that in, in variety of languages. Sometimes it's a, it's not necessarily an access issue, it's a publication issue, right? And so we are able to go and seek out those, the specialized vendors and build those relationships so that we can get access to the materials that people are genuinely interested in. I also know that Dara and her team have been very successful in pursuing grant funding opportunities to enhance and expand on the library's cultural programming and resources. And I'm sure she can speak to that a little bit more in-depth than I can, but ways that, that the library can really highlight and celebrate the, the diversity in the community. And it's the, it's a Cal Humanities Grant, is that right, Dara?
Yeah. The Innovation Lab Grant.
Great, thank you. And am I understanding that the Library IQ system can also track programs at the libraries?
So we are able to pull from the data that we collect around programs, yes. So we can track program attendance, program attendance across different age groups, across different timelines, so that we're able to assess and interpret that, that information when we're planning future programs.
Okay. And so that is, is that like manually entry for each library? I, I see Katie shaking her head, so yes. And then do the library, do each of the libraries share the program information for what's successful and what's working?
We do. We do. We actually have collaborative teams where we have peer networks and, and communities of practice around serving children, around services to Spanish speakers, around marketing library services. And so we will bring together people. And so we will bring together people like Dara and like Katie, who are doing that same work in other libraries in California and other libraries around the country, so that we can really surface the best of the best and share those great ideas and, and riff on them and, and adapt them to work in the local community.
That's great. And so I think a lot about the future of the younger, the younger kids where they're on TikTok and Instagram. And so is there any future thinking on how we can increase engagement with the younger generation and any kind of social media tracking?
We do, so it's a very good point. And again, this shows the power of the, the partnership. So we all know that, that video is such a focal point for engagement within social media and, and online life. And high-quality video production is pretty time-consuming. And so we have, we've come together to solve that problem, and we're, we're doing what libraries do best, we're sharing and taking turns. So we are working together as a team, and we're looking for, we have various different libraries who have different talented staff who can put together a video, and we're going to take turns so that this library is responsible for February, and this library is responsible for March. And then we share, and we all get to benefit from that, that time and experience. And we only have to do it once a year. And yet we still have a full calendar of new content coming out constantly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I first got into Library IQ watching a webinar, I think, what, three or four years ago?
Yeah.
And I got totally involved in relative use, which we are, I'm assuming, still using on the collection process, et cetera. So I'm making the assumption that that somehow works its way into the DEI?
The Diversity Equity and Inclusion piece?
Yeah.
So those, so for those who don't, who aren't familiar with the relative use, so there are a number of key performance indicators that we utilize to tell us how our materials are being used. And so we want, relative use is one of the, the tools, the indicators that we use to help us know, do we have the materials that people are interested in? Do we have those in the right quantities? And so we want to make sure that we're matching our collection to what people are interested in. And that, that figure tells us, are we on target? The, I don't, I, I think the, that is a different kind of assessment than the Diversity Equity and Inclusion assessment. So we're, the, the relative use material, the performance indicator is looking at individual items, and, and is that item, does that item match, does, does the materials, do the materials that we purchase match the materials that people are interested in using? And it aggregates that across the entire collection. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion tool is much more subject and content-based. And so we are, that tool allows us to assess, does our, does our collection have, it, it allows us to assess from a content perspective. Do we have a, a collection that represents the, the breadth and depth of what we want to make available in our community? So they're, they're two kind of different, they're measuring different things. And so I don't believe that we, I, I don't know that we have those integrated and cross-reference because it's a, it's a little bit of using the different tools for different means.
Okay. So we found in our previous discussions and analysis on relative use that you can't follow it blindly, it's just a tool. That, that, in some collections, it works, or what's, what's the proper word for an area in a collection that's failing me now? For, for some categories, it works quite well, and for others, you're crazy to look at it, because it'll, it'll, your, your information is skewed, especially in the children's section. So I'm, I'm curious on DEI, you mentioned the inclusion of Black, which is important, but the majority, minority community, and I'm not even sure it's a minority, they might deem it the majority community in Escondido, is Latina. How are we doing DEI-wise, or is it too soon to have this tool? Have you used it on our collection? Do we know what, where we are DEI-wise?
We just launched it last week.
Okay, based upon that, when would we have some information on how our collection matches up with what it, DEI is telling us it should be for Hispanic community?
So it, it's always nice to have a full cycle, to, to be able to have a full year's worth of data. Of course, it's, it's live right now, but I think it might be more meaningful if we came back to you in six months or a year to report on that.
Okay, but it's looking at data from time, from time zero, so why wouldn't it have answers now?
So I, I mean, I'm happy to, to walk you through what we have, what we have access to now. I think part of, part of why I think it would be more meaningful to give it a little bit of time is that the library staff have just had access to this information for a week. And so they haven't been able to use this tool to inform the, the decisions that they make going forward. I think giving them a little bit of time to, to implement and employ the recommended, the information that they can...
Would it be reasonable then to, to ask that at the next meeting, you can at least be able to tell us when down the road you'll have a, an analysis you can, you can share with us?
Absolutely, I think, yeah, let's, we can do that.
So our, sorry, did you, I was going to boil off of that.
Oh.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you, you finish, and I'll go again.
So, you know, similar to what John's asking, right? Each community is unique and individual and different. Are, is the DEI profile based off of our community, or is it just a, compared to every other library out there?
So what, what the, what the tool does is it looks at different content categories, and it's, it's, it gives you the ability to assess all content categories. But again, you have, you have the ability to select, well, we'd like to look at this particular area in our collection, we'd like to look at this particular area. It allows you to drill down and select which filters you would like to apply to your assessment. And so if you know that you're very interested in tracking the, a certain area, or a certain, a certain area of content, you can focus on that. But all those, all, the full strength of the tool is available to you. Different aspects are going to be more relevant for different communities depending on that community's makeup.
We could seemingly choose the most high-performing relative use categories and see how DEI is applied there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool.
Okay, so I'm seeing a tremendous increase in the, the information and the power of the, the sorting and things you're able to do on Library IQ. The growth is phenomenal over, since this thing started. So are we to the point where we have the ability to look at so many different things that we're going to get lost in the details unless we focus on specific areas that, that are best suited for looking at the performance as how we want this library, how, how this library city wants to run it?
Well, within, it is, it is a vast sea of data. And so within Library IQ, you have the ability to customize and highlight the things that you are, that are most relevant for your needs. So one of the things that we have within Library IQ is a, what's it called? Is, is it our, like, collection plan? I always forget the, it's, it's not a very catchy name, but it's very useful. We have a, a plan that allows us to track certain, we can identify which key performance indicators we want to track, and then we can go in and see, okay, this is how we did in that performance indicator last year, we're going to set new targets for next year, and it will show you your, your trends over time. Are you, are you heading in the right direction relative to that key performance indicator? Or is this, does this represent an area for, for growth for you?
Okay, so would it make sense to, we, we have a, a set of criteria that, that we look at?
I had the same.
Okay, you, you, you can probably be more concise than I can, tell, tell them what we want.
So what I'm thinking is we could potentially tie KPIs to our strategic plan execution, right? And see, you know, trends over time of how we've performed and what we're going towards.
That's right.
Okay.
We also have certain statistics that we have been looking at. Now that you have all this other data, are there things you think we ought to be looking at differently? Not, not more things, we're going to end up with analysis paralysis if we're not careful. But what we're doing now, and, and when we look at things from one quarter to the next, do, do we want to, do you want to take a look at revamping that and coming up with something that allows you to have a good management tool and us a good, a good tool to, to evaluate performance?
I don't feel like I can answer that on the spot. I'd have to, like, sit and really look at what we, you know,
Oh, yeah.
what we measure, what we use, and what Library IQ might replace. But that's something I can look at and report back on.
Okay, and, and if this takes a couple of months, I wouldn't be surprised.
Yeah, it likely will. We can, Katie, our stats person has something to say.
So we do an annual check-in with our collection development department, and we actually just had our annual check-in, I want to say, less than a month ago. And we go over these key, key performance indicators and our goals that we have set, that we set last year, and then where we're at this year. And then we have a discussion about, okay, do we want to keep the same goal, do we want to change it? So we, we're already doing this with our collection development person. And also too, we do it by section, right? So the youth services has a different focus, the teen has a different focus, adult services has a different focus, our Spanish language has a different focus. So we have a couple, like, key spots, I want to say four or five, that have very specific goals. So that is actually something that we, we kind of work on with our Collection IQ folks' brain, like, every year. And that is something that we've actually just been discussing recently. So it kind of is dovetailing nicely with that. And I mean, next time, I can kind of share what we've done in the past and take a look at. And last time too, 2022 was our first year of setting those goals, and we just kind of were looking to see. And we've actually had a lot more of our relative use statistics go up. We've been doing really well amongst LSNS libraries. So I can bring that shard in for next time as well, to show you guys.
I mean, I think that's a phenomenal metric, honestly. Yeah.
Yeah, I was really excited when I saw it, I was like, oh, okay.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
So, yeah, so we can talk about it next time, but I'll show you kind of like what we've looked at last year, what we kind of talked about this year. I don't know that we've actually agreed on all this stuff yet, so it kind of can see if you guys have any ideas on that.
Okay, anything else?
Just looking forward to what you have next month.
All right, I'll pull up this, the PowerPoint.
All right, great.
And just, I don't want to steal Katie's thunder, but just to give a little, a little preview, so this, this slide here, where you can see the, the red arrow going down and the green arrow going up, so this is one way that we visualize trends over time for key performance indicators. So look right here, so this is not Escondido, this is just a generic sample slide. But you can see right here, relative use gets prime position right in the middle of those key performance indicators.
Heidi, I think this has been really great. I'm very glad that you came and presented to us, I'm very, very pleased. I think I, both Virginia and John covered a lot of my questions, I have two others that I don't know if they were addressed. The first one has to do with the slide you showed of all of the basis of data that you use to inform Library IQ. One of the things that we're talking about, right, just as a society, is data bias, right? So particular to the US Census, I think, having been on the registered team commission and understanding, you know, demographics and how that information was collected in 2020, a lot of folks were very scared to provide data. So can you address a little bit how you accommodate and understand data bias and how that informs Library IQ?
Sure. That's a big question, right? So maybe it would be, it would be helpful to show a little bit of how we utilize the census information. So obviously, there's, there's really powerful demographic information, I mean, there's, there's just layers upon layers upon layers of information. But one of the ways that we find it is most relevant for, for our purposes is to understand and visualize where people, where people, where are people in our community? So let me go over again to the, the live, the live site. And we have, for example, we have a, a patron map that is looking at, at a high level, so this is not, it's, it's a little bit anonymized in that it is, we don't drill down too far, but we can, we can show you some, some patterns of where people live and where they, who's using our library. And so you, you can see some of the topographic features and, and just those, those natural, you know, ways that people congregate, whether it's on one side of a freeway, or whether it's a, a community. You can also see gaps where there might be communities that we're not reaching as, as deeply. Sometimes that's because nobody lives there, that it may be open field, but this gives you a, a little bit of a visualization of where the people are that are using, using your library. And so in, I think, again, this, this is taking relevant information from the census about census tract information, and we are overlaying that with what we know about how our collections are used. In terms of thinking about, thinking about data bias, again, I think this is one of the advantages of having this be a tool to inform decision-making rather than making decisions on your behalf. So that you can be, you can engage actively with the data, you can ask questions, you can be mindful, you can be skeptical, you can, you can vet the information and, and take steps to mitigate, address, acknowledge some of that inherent bias. You know, this isn't, it's not going into the black box and spitting out an answer for you. This is just taking vast quantities of data and processing it in a way that our brains, that can only handle seven numbers at once, can, can actually interpret.
Okay, great, thank you so much. It actually, that map you showed segues very nicely into my next question, which has to do with privacy concerns. So when we talk about amalgamated data like this, and especially, you know, the profiles that Debbie Joy helped us develop for the strategic plan, and, and, you know, really drilling down into market data and relative use and everything like that, how are we ensuring that, you know, people stay anonymous in our data sets?
So I think it's important to acknowledge that privacy is a core value of libraries. This is, it's built into our code of ethics, it's built into the, the Library Bill of Rights, it's something that every single person who comes to work at a library receives training... It's something that every single person who comes to work at a library receives training around the importance of privacy and what does that look like? What does that mean? It's also, we're lucky in California that that is codified in our education code. And so we have not just a professional obligation, but also a legal obligation to protect the privacy of library users. And so we, when we're looking at tools like this, we are looking at anonymized data. We are not looking at Heidi, what did Heidi use and what has Heidi been reading? We are looking at that at a level that does not, it does not connect the specific person to that, to that usage. We're looking at that, we're looking at the book, not the person, or we're looking at the item, not the person. We are also, we're also very mindful of the fact that, you know, we see a whole bunch of partners here. They all, I'm sure you've gone through the process of signing up for a new tool or a new service, and you have that, you know, scroll past page after page of the things that you're agreeing to. And so know that we are, we are out there acting as a first line of defense for you when we're, when we're making these connections and building these relationships with these vendors. You know, we, we don't just click accept. We read that. We actually, we read that. In some cases, we go back to them and we say, hey, you know, we, why do you need this information? Or how are you using this information? Or can you change this? So we really want to safeguard that, that privacy at all levels. We also view part of our role in supporting literacy, in supporting literacy around access to information, navigating information and privacy. And so that's part of our mandate is to help educate and inform the public about what this means and how to make smart and safe decisions. I would say that it's just, it's, it's, it's in our blood. It's in our veins. It's part of every single thing that you do. It's hard to talk about privately as it's, as a separate entity because it is so embedded in every single decision that we make.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
Let's see. We will move on then to, let me see if I can read this. Strategic plan review.
Okay, so this will be relatively brief. Resilience has a lot of future dates in it. So I'm going to go over where we are with some of them that begin in the fiscal year 2024. Most recently, under the strategy of reduce waste, review and suggest best practices by scheduling meetings each year, or two meetings per year with the city recycling division to review and suggest best practices. We have had our first meeting, and we now have a compost bin that gets picked up on Monday. So that is step one for that. But we will continue working with the client to add more practices to that. Continue to ensure proper disposal by verifying reuse and recycling of materials that have been withdrawn from the collection and technology that has reached the end of life. We currently do work with the friends of the library to make sure, not only have we tried to sell materials in the bookstore and through our online vendor before we get to a point of recycling them. And we will be also working with IT to make sure that computers that were removed and reaching their end of life, that can't be maybe reposted throughout the city, are being responsibly disposed of or reused if at all possible. And then our next fiscal year 2024 is encourage wellness. Provide alternatives to screen time for children and tweens by offering four non-screened focus programs. That is not going to be a tough one for us to reach. We already are averaging 26 non-screened focus programs each month. So I think we are on task for that one for sure. That might have been one of our few easy wins. And do you have any questions about other categories or concerns that I didn't touch on? Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Pioneer Room update. Oh, hello. I'm not sure if we've met you yet.
Am I on? Yes, okay, perfect. Hello, my name is Ashley Hayes. I am the Pioneer Room Library Assistant Two. I split my time between the circulation desk and the Pioneer Room whenever it is open on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about what the Pioneer Room has been up to. From January to March, we've helped 334 researchers, which is wild to me. The foot traffic in there is nuts and fantastic and lovely. We've added two new collections through our digitize Escondido program. That's where folks are able to bring in photographs, manuscripts, ephemera, things like that. We digitize that for them. It becomes part of our collections, and then they retain a copy of that digital material. Part of that includes the Rick Carey collection, which is photographs, newspapers, and documents from his father and uncle's time in World War II, which is really lovely. They were longtime Escondido residents, so great. Our two volunteers have been very busy. We've had Sarah Mitchell working on our Times Advocate photograph collections that we can try to get that catalogued, itemized, so that it can be used by our researchers. And then Beth McIntyre has been, will be leading a beginning genealogy workshop during our summer reading challenge this year. That's just one of the collaborations we have in, within our own departments or within the library. The other one is working with Adult Services and John Archer to bring a walking tour, which will happen this Saturday, which is super exciting. So the Pioneer Room will be hosting a tour of the archives. We'll be showcasing some of our historic home and properties information. And then John will be leading that walking tour. And then we're also collaborating outside of the library with the Washaim Pumki Museum in Valley Center. That's the Rincon Band of Lusenyo Indians Museum. Their curator, Bianca Valdez, we met during Grape Day last year, made a connection with her, and she's going to be hosting a tweens program with our youth services team for basket weaving also for summer reading. So super thrilled about that. We will also be going to Grape Day again this year. Last year, we reached 204 people at our booth, which was amazing. And then we're also trying to make our collections more accessible for our Hispanic community. My colleague Abril has been translating all of our exhibit, our gallery exhibits and things like that, all of that, all of those materials into Spanish. And we've also been trying to work as hard as we can to get everything in both English and Spanish translations. And then finally, I wanted to showcase Content DM, which is our new collections, yes, collections management and website for our digital collections. So if you'll give me a moment here, I can pull that up, and I can answer any questions that you might have so far.
Thank you. You guys were the ones who funded that. Yay!
Sorry.
So, so Abril's translation, that was funded by us? Or was that a grant or?
No, the Content DM.
Oh, oh!
This is that platform that I asked you guys to support in February that you paid for the first two months, two years of.
Yes.
And so this is where we're at after just a few months.
Okay, I have questions about Abril's work, but we'll get to that. Okay, thank you.
Yes. So this is Content DM. Again, it is the collection management and patron-facing website for our digital collections. I'm hoping we can get this live on our website in our collections, our archival collections section of the Pioneer Room's website, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. There's still some bugs to iron out and things like that. And this is currently a draft, so it is not in its final form, but it's so beautiful, and I love it. The homepage here has information about the Pioneer Room, including contact information. There are links to submit a research request. So whenever you dig down in here and you have questions about digging down rabbit holes and things like that, you can contact us. We've tried to have a million different ways to have that information available to our patrons. There is a very robust search feature up here in the top right, where you can search by keywords, peoples, places, events, and things like that. I wanted to click into a couple of these for you. The first is having our Pioneer Room finding aids. You can consider these like kind of tables of contents for our collections. Each of these, whenever you click into them, will have a landing page for the collection. We are writing all of this information ourselves. We try to give some tips and an overview of the collection. Clicking this browse button here then will take you to the items. There are 16 finding aids in this collection. You can see that here in the records count. And then over on the left-hand side here, you can see that we are just looking at the Pioneer Room finding aids, but it does show you the remaining collections that are available to researchers. Down here at the bottom, you have a subject list. This will tell you kind of at a glance if you're looking for specific information, let's say on Catholic churches. You can click this. This will narrow down to just the finding aids or the items in the collection that are relevant to that subject term. You can see here, it's a finding aid about Catholic churches. If we click into the item level, there's quite a bit of information here. The first is giving you an image of the front page, or whenever we look at a photograph collection, we'll see an image of the photograph itself. Down at the bottom, we'll give you, sorry, bear with me here, we'll give you an object description. This is all metadata that we enter in ourselves. It gives you just a brief overview of that information. And then if we click this expansion key here, that will take us to the document itself that will allow us to scroll through. Again, finding aids are kind of content, tables of contents. You've got one here that tells you what exactly is in this collection. So you can determine if those are going to be the right fit for your search terms and what you're researching. Just to go back quickly here to the homepage, we do, we're starting kind of a soft launch with our past gallery exhibits. So for example, Irrigating Escondido here was our last exhibit of this year. Again, you've got that landing page with the browse button down at the bottom. And this kind of takes you through, kind of simulates what you would see if you were experiencing this as a gallery exhibit. So these are numbered so that they maintain their original order. And then we've got a little bit of historical interpretation to kind of tell the story of irrigation in Escondido. If we click into one of these, you get that same item level details with the metadata at the bottom, and that expansion tool that allows you to, then you can zoom into these and kind of scooch around. See this guy in the background? And then we can close out of that. The other really great feature of Content DM is it allows us to link out to collections that are hosed on external websites. For example, our California Revealed collection is on the California Revealed Internet Archive. If we click this, instead of taking us to the landing page, it's going to take us directly to that Internet Archive website. This is a little bit of a shortcut for us, so that as we're working to get all of our collections into Content DM, where they are currently, we can still link out to and have access to those. So that is what we're, we've been working on so far this year. It's been a lot, but very exciting stuff. Any questions for me?
No, sorry. Very cool. Very cool stuff. So I was a genealogist during college, so I worked for about eight years doing genealogy for a family. And so this is very cool stuff to me, and maybe I'm just nerding out a little bit. One of the questions I do have refers back to Abril's work. So is that effort like part of her daily job? Was it a grant that was given? Or is she, you know, being compensated extra for, for this extra work? Just a question.
I can't speak to that.
Okay.
No, it's just some, it's something she really wants to do and is willing to work on it. We have so much, so much of our staff is bilingual, and a lot of times, I just don't even know until it already happened that, yeah, we've translated this, that, and the other thing. So we're very, very fortunate.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a great project. I'm glad to see this kind of progress this quickly.
Thank you. Okay, great. Moving into the statistics report and the director's report. Thank you, Serena. Thank you. Okay, great. More, or an update on social.
So you all had asked about the possibility of having a social worker in the library. And the library board, so, well, I don't need to repeat, repeat all of that, but I spoke with other directors or assistant directors in different locations. Excuse me. I spoke with Alan, I'm going to mispronounce his last name, Colachi, from Upland Library, Natalie Evans from Osceola Library System in Florida, and CJ Mento from Oceanside Public Library here nearby. Upland had a system where they were working with, and this is a correction to be made. I originally thought it was UC Riverside. It's actually California Baptist University, also located in Riverside, that they had social work students earning credits in the library. There were definite advantages to that program. The students did have to check in with an advisor. It also had the volunteers, the students who were the volunteers, on a regular rotation. So there wasn't as many opportunities for patrons or staff to see them as a caseworker, you know, that they checked in with regularly. So that seemed to be a really great rotating program, and it was funded through a grant that was discontinued. So they no longer have the program. Similar to that, Osceola Library System in Osceola County, Florida, they had a part-time social worker through state-funded grants. And they had a social worker on staff that was lost when funding was not obtained after the grant's date was completed. So that is one big concern to do this with grant funding. I think it's a service, if we were to open it up, we would have to figure out a long-term funding solution. Additionally, the Oceanside Public Library, they currently have their own full-time social worker on staff, and it's a very valued community service. And in their case, most of the social services needed are five miles or more away from the library, which is a little different from our situation. So in talking to our frontline staff, they say, and this is depart for the full department, once, occasionally twice a week, they'll get questions specifically asking for social services in our area. When they have, when this happens, we do have a notebook at the desk, and this is, and I'll be happy to bring it up so you can see. It's a list of all of the social services we have here in Escondido. All of the locations for these social services are within a mile's walk from our building, with the exception of one. But you actually have to be referred to that program through something that's within a mile range. So we have that. We also have San Diego County for more specific needs that may not be covered in the city of Escondido. So that is helpful. Also, our relationship with the Rangers, the, one of the Rangers does a ride every Monday where he hits different spots within the city, and the library's included on that list. So if they know that there's somebody in the building in need of social services, we can also put those folks in.
All of the locations for these social services are within a mile's walk from our building, with the exception of one. But you actually have to be referred to that program through something that's within a mile range. So we have that. We also have San Diego County for more specific needs that may not be covered in the city of Escondido. So that is helpful. Also, our relationship with the Rangers. The, one of the Rangers does a ride every Monday where he hits different spots within the city. And the library's included on that list. So if they know that there's somebody in the building in need of social services, we can also put those folks in contact with a Ranger to say, if you can be here on Monday or be at a different location in the city, they can arrange that so that they can actually talk to a social worker directly and then get referred on to the right social service provider, depending on the need. So after hearing the experiences and knowing that the funding isn't there, I feel like our situation is pretty ideal. The other issue we have is the actual space. If we were to have a regular social worker in the building at designated hours, they would need a place where they could talk and have a private conversation, but also keep the social worker safe. So we'd need like a windowed-in area. That could change dramatically, maybe even with the infrastructure grant, but we don't know and we can't promise that. So for us, I think that the system we have for now is the best answer. If our physical space changes, if our relationship with the Rangers were to change, that would definitely have to be reassessed. But in the present time, I think we have a pretty good system. Do you have questions or concerns that maybe I didn't address?
No, it sounds like you've got a, a good workable plan now. If we did find some local charity who offers social services that would like to co-locate here, full, someone full-time or part-time, then we'd have to, again, we'd have to have the facility.
Right, then we would just have to physically have the space for them to work from.
Okay, so we'll just, that's basically something that just, we don't know at this point.
Right.
Okay.
So I understand that we only get requests one to two times a week for social worker appointment or resources. Are we including any issues with the unhoused population coming in and maybe not asking for it, but needing help? Like, how often is that happening, once a week?
We, we have had situations where we were aware of a young man that, after turning 18, was considered to be on his own and no longer staying in his home and was spending a lot of time at the library. So when we see something that is concerning to us as librarians, we do let the Rangers know. A lot of time, they're very good at having casual conversations, introducing themselves and getting background information. He is now actually in the process of getting housed. So we do point people out to the Rangers to say, we don't know the situation, but we've noticed that this person's here every day, Monday through Saturday, and it would probably be good to do a wellness check.
Okay, so it sounds like the Rangers are helping.
They're, they're amazing. I would not change our system on that at all, ever, ever.
So I think one of the reasons why this made its way onto the agenda was because during the presentation earlier in the year to the City Council, the mayor had a lot of questions about it. Are we able to feed this information back to him in his office? Great. Thank you. Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Dara. Onto your, or Katie's, I guess, statistics report and then the director's report.
Stats are pretty stable. We do have pre-COVID actually increase on our circulation of physical materials. We stand pretty steady at our digital materials being about between 15 and 18% of our total circ, which I think is pretty cool. Link Plus has been incredibly popular. We're approaching that point where we're lending out almost as many items as people are borrowing from us, from other libraries. And it is bustling. There's just always things being pulled and shipped out. And so that is a really amazing service. We're really excited to have. Yeah, I mean, our, our attendance at our events has just gone through the roof. We had the No Ruse program, which I know Dara's going to talk about in her report, but we had like 175 people. It was amazing. We're seeing a lot of people come out for events. And I think too, keeping a lot of our adult programs in the hybrid format has kept our attendance high, especially for our writers group and for our book clubs. Because we do have like between a third and half of all of our participants will come on Zoom just due to having work or being in a physical location that's not workable to get there on time. But yeah, I mean, our programming is up. Our attendance at programming is up. We're not really doing virtual programming anymore. We do still livestream our second Saturday concerts. And like I said, we do the hybrid live programming. And then we are, as Heidi mentioned and Dara mentioned, trying to do more video content for social media. It is time-consuming, but we have a good team that's really excited to do it. So that's pretty much where we're at. Does anyone have any questions about the numbers?
So I have to correct Katie. Oh, no, oh, no. In March, our No Ruse celebration actually had 180 in attendance. She got the 175 from Poway, who we were hoping to come close to, but we beat them, so, you know. But that was a great celebration. It was a result from the partnership with the Persian Cultural Center and the financial support from the Friends of the Library. The attendees were able to sample food from the Hafstein table, enjoy music, dance, and learn the history of the tradition. In Youth Services, we had Comos Adise, which is our evening bilingual storytime. So that kickoff had 15 attendees. We expect that to grow. Our Toddler Tales continues to see numbers between 90 and 125, both on Tuesday and Thursday. And we had a total of 690 attendees in March for those, that storytime. Our Caesar Chavez Volunteer Day was very successful. We had 20 people come and help us clean up the library campus. So that was exciting. And, oh, there was something else I was going to mention because you brought it up earlier. Now I've forgotten it already. I don't know. Oh, I thought you whispered. I apologize, can't remember. But do you have any questions on the director's reports or other programs?
Volunteer Appreciation Day is the 25th?
Twenty-sixth, so Wednesday. We're doing coffee and cake. We have a gift for everybody. It's just a little drop-in chance to socialize and for us to express our appreciation for all the great things that you all do. So if you have time, you're in the area between two and four on Wednesday, please drop by. Our staff's really excited.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, Dara and Katie. All right, so I think the last thing on the agenda is just the, around the room for, for our input. So Virginia, I'll start with you.
Okay, so it was really, I think I said this last month, I was really happy to see the Como Sadisa event on the calendar. And I'm a part of an Escondido Facebook Moms Group and they're already talking about the next one. In the blog, they're like, when is the next one? Does anyone know? And I'm like, I do. Or I'll keep them updated on, on when that's announced again. So I think the community really appreciated and liked that. Think they like exposing their children, if they don't know Spanish, to the, to the bilingual storytimes. So thanks for adding that.
John, anything from you?
I've been so busy doing other volunteer work, haven't had time to do anything.
Yeah, no worries, no worries. So the only tip I have is that I was up in the Paso Robles region this past weekend and doing a lot of wine tasting. And what struck up a conversation with one of the women there who grew up in Chula Vista. And she talked to me about how frequently she goes to the library. And I was like, oh, well, tell me more about that because I'm the, you know, on the board in San Diego and, or in Escondido. And she was saying that one of the things she loves is that she as an adult uses Libby and that she uses physical material for her kids. So that's, they go in and they get physical material, but then everything that she consumes is online. So I thought that was really interesting. Okay. Yeah, I know, I said I, I do all of my fiction books on my iPhone and then my nonfiction is usually hard copy. Yeah. Okay, great. Anything else? No? Okay, well, with that, I will adjourn our April meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. Thank you so much.